Oh, no. It's not in here, is it?
Yes, I did.
It's in this one?
Yes, because guess what I said? It is that one. I said, you said a couple of words. But I'm like, oh, I'm going to make it.
Who said that?
Thank you.
Who said that? Oh. Yeah.
How do you know which one you're going to give?
I know which one yours is because it's the only PowerPoint one.
Okay, good.
So I'll just put ZZZ because I'm not going to use it.
Okay, good, good.
There we go. Now when I open it, I know to go in order. But now here's another question. Who do I give the clicker to for all of these? Usually they said they hand it to Latifah.
Wait a minute. Joel just said that they're going to do the budget together. Just so you know, we need to move the DDD up with the budget presentation.
Okay. All right, let's make it BBB then. So it goes BBB.
Yeah, he just told me that.
B.
Let me ask him if which one, if we're doing his presentation or mine.
Okay.
That way you know if we're doing his, then mine, okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah. Ask him what.
Ask me if there's any junk up on it.
And we don't, we don't, no, no, we don't, no, we don't have any.
Yeah, so I'm going to go talk.
Yep, yep. So you know where it is, straight through that. Oh. Down under yours?
So you know you had called mine BBB too.
Mm-hmm.
Instead, make it back to DDD.
Okay. It's going to be third or fourth?
And then his will be um, DDD two. So yeah, you can make, um, yeah, he's going to be before mine.
Okay, so he's going to be before yours and then this is going to go before both culturally and linguistically.
I guess so. Which is crazy because it's.
So, I don't know. It's going to be his D two. I don't know. I think, I think it's still going to be second.
He said that because he said he's moving him to D.
Okay.
Does it work?
Yep. Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. So wait a minute, but which one goes first though? There's two of them now. Which one is the first one?
His is, you're right, the way it is now.
Okay.
So the lower four Ds goes first, the second three, um, Ds. So, but when, as far as who does this, um, Latifah, the first one is the COVID update. That's James.
Mm-hmm.
The second one culturally and linguistically, that one is um, Latifah. And then the.
Which one?
She'll be over there.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't know which one she has.
All right.
If she has, if she has.
So I'll give Jim all first and I can give it to him.
Jim, I mean, Jim and the last two.
Mm-hmm.
Together.
Okay.
You give us the, um, clicker we can use.
Okay. All right. I don't know. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Joel. And, and yeah, and I'm really sorry, like I'm surprised. I'm impressed with my.
Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, for which stands one nation, one regard, one equal, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Mr. Rossi. Seven present.
Three, the minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, minutes of February 10, 2022, and the right, the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the low school committee of February 16, 2022, and to place them on file by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Rossi, on favor of the eye opposed, say no. The eyes have it, motion is carried, but a comment by Ms. Doherty.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, there's a, a couple of questions that were noted in the minutes uh, that we still haven't received the answers on. Uh, those are the minutes from the February 16th meeting.
Okay.
Um, I had asked regarding the, um, Family Resource Center. We had, uh, this body had approved an expenditure for a consultant. And I'm, I'm looking for the scope and the timeline of the work to be conducted. Um, I did, this is my third time asking and I, I guess I can make a formal motion, but I thought, okay. So I, I, I'm, I'm just looking for like a brief one-page report, but this, um, this consultant and the work that they're going to, the information they provide us is very important to this committee because we know, um, our Family Resource Center is the first place of contact for our families. And I know it's very much one of our pillars of our strategic goals, to provide an open, welcoming, supportive environment for our families. So I'm really quite interested in, in learning what this, um, consultant is going to provide, what the timeline is for getting it. And I think I had given you a list of questions. So I'd be really appreciative of that information. Uh, the other question had to do, and I think it's later on in the minutes, uh, about the enrollment report. Well, we had number of students that are still not in our classes and I had asked, you know, how long and what numbers of students have been waiting? I think, um, we had gotten an answer that it might have been as, as since October. And, and I'm sure that's just an outlier few, but again, I would like those answers, uh, those questions answered. So I would just ask that again, if we could get something for our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, if you could take note of that and provide the request for the, say, a report on a consultant and student retention for the following meeting. Would that be possible or do you need more time?
So noted.
Good, thank you. Is that okay, Ms. Doherty? Wonderful. For permission to enter, need a motion to approve the ratification of the LSAA memorandum of agreement by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Mon. If no other comments, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Five memorials. Five point one, Caroline Yunta, retired Lowell High School teacher. Five point two, Suzanne Moore, retired Shaughnessy School校 professional. Five point three, Kathleen Quill Guista, mother of Lowell Public School Coordinator of Math, Mathematics, K through 12, Jeff Guazada. Please dim the light. Six motions. Six point one, Ms. Martin requesting to schedule a meeting of the Personnel and Labor Relations Subcommittee for the end of March or the beginning of April, and that we invite a representative from MAS, ASC, to provide members of the school committee with retaining on the DESI Superintendent Performance Review Process, second by Ms. Thompson, Ms. Mon.
Thank you very much. Really just looking for an opportunity to bring together the subcommittee. Uh, I do it with the full intention of having the entire committee take part in this, uh, training. Um, it is something that is offered by the MAS Association for School Committees and we are scheduled to be concluding the superintendent's next performance evaluation by June 30th. Um, I believe it's June 30th. Um, that will be part of what the training will be about. So, um, but you know, with so many new members joining us and, and having not been through this process, it is a little counterintuitive, so I think it would really be helpful for the full committee to get the opportunity to go through this training as we are set to begin this process coming up soon. Thank you.
No other comments on favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Six point two, Ms. Doherty requests the superintendent effectively manage the school committee agenda and information to the board to enable informed and efficient decision-making by providing one, complete reports that cover critical aspects without being overly burdensome in length. Two, report data, report and data in timely manner as per regular meeting rules for subcommittee meeting, minimum 24 hours prior. Three, plan agenda to enable adequate time for review and discussion when critical decisions are required, second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty?
All right, thank Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I want to just kind of specify some things. You'll notice I didn't specify lengths of reports. I, I understand that some issues require more information than others, but I think we've really kind of got off track of how to really manage the information. Like, for instance, tonight's packet had 79 slides for us to go through. And, uh, last week we had a special meeting about a very important policy, changing our attendance and retention policies, where we needed to have more time to discuss it than was allowed in the previous meeting. And there, I would say that we need good content in that we need the facts we need to make the decisions. Like in the example with the attention and retention policy, to understand, which we heard at the special meeting, that it's, it will impact 3,400 students. It may even be more than that, but that's the number right now that are looking to fail if we don't change these policies. So my, my intention here is to work collaboratively, um, the committee and the administration. And I wanted to actually, you know, just say, I think we could work with less trees dying, uh, more executive summaries, but information that provides all the facts we're looking for. And again, I'm, I'm looking at tonight's packet. Um, 79 slides is burdensome to cover, um, what perhaps could be done with less slides. That, that's my intention with this motion. Um, and thank you.
Here are no other comments on the favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Now go to seven subcommittees. Seven point one, School Improvement and Performance Management. Mr. Chair Dominic Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the meeting we held, uh, on February 16, um, Mr. Dakota and Ms. Thompson were the members, including myself, and in attendance also Ms. Rossi and Ms. Martin. Uh, we talked about, um, Mr. Skinner talked about a, uh, setting a goal for having district-wide improvement and closing performance gap between schools. One of the solution in achieving that goal is uniform data for the whole district. And we discussed about having the data software, uh, that is custom-made for Lowell. So I, so that's pretty much what we talked about. And I'd like to ask to accept this as a report of progress.
Any other comment, Mr. Dakota? No? Okay.
Move to accept it.
Okay, motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Thompson, all the favor of the eye, motion is approved. Eight, report of the superintendent. Eight point one, COVID-19 update, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. This report is within the committee's packet. Uh, we're going to submit this as a report of progress. There's one point of note, uh, that Dr. Hall will take you through, which is updated guidance around mask requirements on school buses. And we would like the committee's guidance on that. Our recommendation is that we shift to optional masking on school buses at the same time that we're shifting to optional masking for classrooms. Dr. Hall will give you an update on the guidance we received and we would, uh, need that guidance back from the committee if the intent of the committee's decision at the last meeting on mask guidance does not apply to school buses. We'll need that guidance, otherwise we're understanding it to, to apply. Dr. Hall?
So I included in the packet a, um, article or memo from, uh, the CDC and something, um, from DESI that basically gives the committee the authority to decide whether or not masks will be, uh, worn on buses. So, uh, that's, uh, what's before you right now for your decision.
I would make the motion that we make masks optional on Monday, March 7th, I believe is the date, which is when we had voted to make masks optional in the schools. I think it makes sense to do it at the same time.
There, there's a motion by Ms. Doherty to make masks optional on bus transportation, second by Mr. Dakota. Do we draw a call on that one? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rossi? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Um, I see that, um, item eight point two on the budget and nine point two is for the approval of fair student, uh, on funding. I think, um, we probably can discuss these two, um, together. So I need a motion to bundle eight point two and nine point two. Um, actually, the, the motion combined to move nine point two out of order and to discuss eight point two and nine point two together. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we have an eight point two on our form, or at least I do not.
Yeah, I don't know. We skipped eight point two.
It appears that the copy in the hard copy packet, uh, so you have eight point two is the FY23 budget update. I can take that, Mr. Mayor, at the same time as nine point two. So if we want to just move to eight point three, I would just say, accept eight point two as a report of progress. I'll, I'll cover the budget update at the same time that we do the fair student funding pool. If you're following your hard copy packet, it's within your online agenda. I'm not quite sure. I, Ms. Turner just shared that with me on my agenda, it's there. So I, I don't know what, uh, I, I don't know, I was not aware of that error on the hard copy packet until it was just provided that information. But eight point two, uh, which was in your electronic agenda, is the FY23 budget update. Nine point two is the approval of the fair student funding pool. All of the attachments are within your packet, uh, within your packet right now. So you have all of the attachments in your packet. That's the proper listing of the bullet points within the publicly posted agenda. So you have all of the attachments in your packet. Eight point two and nine point two will be, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you do eight point two just as a report of progress, we'll just take it up at nine point two and that might be your easiest.
Okay, so, um, the superintendent is recommending, instead of moving nine point two up, we'll move eight point two down on the agenda. Would that be okay? Uh, somebody make a motion for that, please? By Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson. Uh, all the favor, the motion is approved. We move eight point two to nine point, to discuss with nine point two and bundle them together. Um, eight point three, culturally and linguistically sustaining practice update, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is an update on one of our key strategic initiatives. Uh, Ms. Phillips, our Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, will provide the committee with the update. Ms. Phillips?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. Um, I'm not going to go through every slide. I did keep some of the slides in there just for, um, continuity of, of understanding, pulling some slides from last year. Um, so you'll see the agenda here. Um, those are the areas that are outlined in the presentation. Um, so I will touch on some of them. So these are our core beliefs and fundamental commitments. I do want to start by saying that everything in this presentation, um, reflects the, reflects our commitment to eliminating racial, ethnic, and linguistic achievement and opportunity gaps, to providing funding and resources to close these gaps, and to engage all of our families with courtesy, dignity, respect, and understanding. So everything you see in here ties back to, to those commitments. I want to, um, start just with a quick overview of our student demographics. I think it's important just to acknowledge the unique, the uniqueness of our district. Um, this data was taken from our DESI district profile. Um, we feed this data into DESI, um, but it's uploaded in different intervals. So, um, this reflects the most recent data provided to DESI, although, um, some of the numbers have changed if you look inside of our own system right now. Um, but nonetheless, our largest student group are, are Hispanic students, almost 38% of our students, um, largely reflecting, um, heritage, cultural backgrounds from Puerto Rico, um, the Dominican Republic, Colombia. And this year, we also had a large, um, group of students coming from Ecuador. Our second largest group, almost 28%, um, are Asian, Asian-American population. Um, our largest student group are Kamai students among this group. And then we have our, um, white students, almost 23%. And I think it's important to note that within this category, um, we have almost 1,000 Brazilian students who would identify as white, um, for the most part. And we also have, um, our Afghan students would likely identify as white, um, even though they come with, with linguistic, um, needs and are often identified as, as English learners. And then our African, African-American population, almost 8%. Um, that's broken down into both our African students, our African immigrants, as well as our African-American students. And then I also want to make a special note of our English, English language learner population. Here we have 26%. Um, I'm told our most recent, um, percentage is around 28%. And when we look at the overall state, which is around 11%, again, that reflects that Lowell, um, has a very unique population that we need to, um, to always consider and engage with the communities when we're, when we're making, uh, decisions around, um, meeting the needs of our students. Um, the next slide reflects our staffing data. This was pulled again from DESI, uh, what we report into DESI. This is full-time staff. Um, and you'll see that we, well, you, you don't see the comparison between last year and this year, but we do have an increase, I believe it's about 19% increase in our diverse staff. Um, but as you'll see by these numbers, um, we still have a ways to go in increasing, um, racial, ethnic, cultural diversity of our staff. Um, I wanted to include this select data for you because it's important for us, as we talked about our commitment to closing the opportunity gaps and the achievement gaps, it's important that we're looking at disaggregated data and not just looking at the overall student averages. Um, this data was pulled from DESI again. Um, this is reflecting, um, our, our data from last year. And you'll see, um, that some of our student groups, you'll see some large disparities in, in the outcomes, um, that our students are, are achieving. And it's important to acknowledge that this data is a starting point, but then it's important to understand the narratives and the stories behind the data in order to get to the solution. And that's the approach that we're using with our Hispanic Student Success Task Force, which is made up of, um, community members, parents, and a student, where we are looking at the data, we're trying to understand the experiences um, that, that reflect our students in our district in order to, um, in order to come to solutions. I provided some information for you around culturally responsive and culturally linguistically sustaining practices. Um, these three researchers are probably the leading researchers in this field. Um, and so I wanted to make sure that this information was there so that you can understand the research behind why we have this initiative in our district. And, um, if you look at the first bullet, um, referring to Gloria Ladson Billings, who was kind of the researcher who really put this on the map, um, you'll see that there are three key areas to this work. One area is the academic achievement, right? Looking at, do we have high expectations for all of our students? How do our perceptions, our stereotypes, our biases, impact, um, how we are interacting with our students? Or, um, you know, the, the perceptions we have of what they can achieve? Then there's the cultural competence piece. Um, staff, staff understanding their own identity, um, their own upbringings, how that impacts the decisions they make. And then the sociopolitical awareness is around, um, our students being community members. And how do we want them to, um, make decisions, solve problems in the community, taking into account and understanding? taking into account and understanding all of our unique differences, as well as our similarities? If you look at the most recent work, that work reflects our current initiative for culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. And the key difference between the 2012 work by Paris and Geneva Gay is that Gloria Ladson Billings, she asserts that we have to take culture into account as a way for students to achieve in the classroom, whereas Paris asserts that our students shouldn't have to choose. This isn't about a melting pot. And that everyone should be elevated to the same level in learning about each other within the classroom. So it's like cultural plurality, we're all equal. We should see equal representation in what we're teaching. And, you know, we have to understand how we're different from the students and how that might be impacting how we're teaching them or how we're applying discipline, you know, how we're creating relationships. So this is kind of the research behind this initiative. The next slide, I included just to share that this is also an initiative of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is something that districts across the state are engaging in and that this is seen as core to our work, not an add-on or peripheral to our work. And so this is a snapshot of the goals that were set for this year by the superintendent. And I just included this so that you understand where the equity initiatives lie within these four goal areas. Even though the equity work does touch other initiatives, these are kind of the key ones that we're really working toward. So you'll see the diversity, recruitment, and hiring, the culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. The next slide has communication and outreach to families of linguistically diverse backgrounds. And then there's an update on the portrait of a graduate. You'll see some of the key actions and activities that we plan to undertake. There's a column on the current status of what we think we've been able to achieve up to now or plan up to now, and then a column for the next steps. But I really... The last slide I really want to talk about is the diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI model school because what we really need is a framework for our district to be able to guide the work, to be able to measure the work, monitor the work over time. And so I have here for you a sample matrix, the four key areas that have been discussed with our Hispanic Student Success Task Force, with some other community works, with my office team. So this is the framework right now, the four key areas that we've identified. As if we do these four things, you know, work toward these four areas well, we will push our schools to be, you know, more culturally and linguistically...
Sustaining.
Sustaining. Thank you. Thank you for using the language. So as I mentioned with the data, and before I go into this, also that our schools are engaging in their quality improvement plans, their planning process for next year. They have a culturally sustaining practice goal to incorporate into their plans for next year. And these are the areas that we've shared with them, you know, as you look through your data, as you identify what are the challenges in your school, what are the top priorities, where might you want to prioritize, you know, these initiatives in your school? So the first area is student outcomes, opportunity, and achievement gaps. You know, looking at your school population and understanding, you know, as you set your academic goal or your behavioral goal or whatever the goal is, have you disaggregated the data? And then identified, you know, where do you need to really differentiate your strategy to support whichever group of students? So that's a decision that schools can make, if that needs to be their top priority. There's the culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. This is... This can be many things. We are right now really encouraging our schools around bias in curriculum as kind of a starting point for, you know, setting strong processes in the school for educators reflecting on their practice, right? And thinking about, do I have any bias in the curriculum? That, you know, my year-long curriculum that I've set for the students, is it reflective of different, you know, of identities? Not just racial and cultural, but other identities. But you can't just jump into the bias piece without some other foundational trainings. So you'll see there, there's the need for understanding race, culture, language, identity. Some schools have already done this. If you've already done the identity work in your school, you may be ready to jump right into the tool itself and then how to do the process. If you haven't done the identity work, you may want to start there. But again, these are the decisions schools need to make. The language access, that's been a big initiative in our district. I think that even with all of the challenges that COVID has brought, actually, that's probably one of the positive outcomes is that we really had to figure out, how do we present this high-stakes communication, you know, with families? We haven't figured it all out, but that is an area that I feel that we have really made improvements in at the district level. But we also want to support our schools at the school-building level. And then the staffing, diversity, recruitment, hiring, and retention. That's also an ongoing initiative. We've made some... You know, that's another area that we've made some changes in the training for staff, you know, in our recruitment materials. But there's a lot more room for growth. Some schools have more positions to hire than others. So this may be for one school, an area that they really want to focus on. Some schools may only have one or two open positions a year, and this may not be the area that they're putting their full focus on. But again, all of these areas, we're saying right now, we're still going through the process with the, you know, staffing community, but these are the four areas where if we can say we're strong in these four areas, that our schools are in a good place. And so the next steps, we're going to continue working toward the strategic goals. I would like us, through this budget session, to reconsider the coordinator position that was proposed last year, especially in light of us coming out of, you know, emerging from COVID and going, you know, into, you know, being able to do this more sustainable work than responding to emergencies. Also, we are assessing and developing our data management systems. So as we have these different trainings for staff, right now, it's not in a data management system where I can say, you know, out of these, for example, you know, 28 school leaders, they attended all of the sessions and they have gotten the full training. If three were absent, you know, I don't have a way right now of, you know, seeing which three missed which section, and then now they need a makeup session. So I think that especially as we roll this out into schools, a professional development system will really help us to be a better organization, you know, as relates to the training around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. And even the training for like our hiring teams, right? We say all of our hiring teams need to be trained. But again, it's not going into a data management system where we're able to know when they were trained. Did a new member come on? Did a new principal come on? You know, what new set of trainings do they need? And we want to ensure that the funding and staffing for these... You know, and the funding is available for the staffing training and data systems that we identify, as well as the ongoing community work to get the input to come up with new and innovative solutions to close those gaps for our students.
Thank you for the report. Any comments, Ms. Thompson?
So I want to just thank you for this very thorough report. This is why I ran. This is exactly why I want to be here, to make sure that we could move towards equity in our school system. So I'm really excited to see all this information, and I know it took a lot to put this all together. You know, there are areas that are really pointed out that where we need to make improvements. I mean, it's great to hear that we made a 19% increase in diversity hires, but clearly, as you said, there's a ways to go. And when you look at the numbers for our Latino students and the graduation rate, you know, them being the largest population and the graduation and the dropout rates being the high... Well, the lowest graduation rate and the highest dropout rate. That's... Those are alarming numbers and statistics. So I'm curious as to, you know, what we are currently doing. And I know that you said you have an action group that's working towards that, but what we're doing to kind of move forward in those areas. And then I have one other question, which was about the diversity hiring, kind of back to what I was just talking about, diversity hiring. I know, I think it was in 2018, there was an audit done. And I believe the school committee paid for that audit. So I was just curious as to, you know, what potentially that has done or what it saw, what it found out that we could utilize in the future. But I, again, thank you for your hard work and for this information.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. Just a few quick questions. I guess, piggybacking on Ms. Thompson. So looking at the diversity recruitment and hiring, and I'm just kind of looking at the strategic goals as we go through them. I agree that it's great that we've seen an increase and recognize that we need to strengthen that and see that number continue to rise. Have we done the kind of data review that would show us exactly how kind of the percentage of candidates make it through the process? You know, being able to look at if we, whatever the position may be, principal, that you have, you know, 100 applicants, 20 are people of color or BIPOC, you know, coming from a diverse background for whatever reason. How many of those 20 make it through to the end? Like, I'm trying... I know that where, you know, we talk a lot about kind of wanting to see improvements, and a lot of times, we look at the end number. But I think there's also process numbers in this that can be really helpful for us. And I think being able to track how that happens over a full hiring season could be at least a metric that would be helpful to us as we go forward. My other big question is, you know, looking at the strategic goals as they're played out here. The... I'm trying to understand what the position, adding the new position, and you might want to do this during the budget conversation because I'm supportive of moving forward with it, but I'm trying to understand like the day-to-day breakdown. I mean, the idea that you're going to find someone who's going to dramatically change our hiring and arrange all of our training and make sure parents are getting appropriate... It's a lot. And just trying to understand what that person's role is as opposed to your role as chief, where you're kind of laying out the full district perspective. So kind of what the interplay would be between your existing office, this new position, yourself, and kind of how it would play out across the district. So I think perhaps, you know, as we go forward and we get into budget season, I'd broadcast that that's what I'd be looking for. But thank you very much.
Ms. Phillips, do you want to make comment to that?
So that probably is a longer conversation, which I'm happy to engage in.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
I was going to say, we could refer that to the Equity Subcommittee. We haven't scheduled one yet, as of yet, but that would be something where we can really dive into this in its fullness and then potentially move forward after that.
Ms. Thompson, do you refer to Subcommittee?
I'd certainly second that. If I could just make one other point, because I do think that using the Subcommittee would be a great way for us to break out prior to budget season. Exactly, you know, being able to see across the budget what's going to be supporting this effort, I think would be really helpful, and it'd be great to do that, you know, in that Subcommittee.
Okay. Ms. Del Rossi?
I just want to make one suggestion. Has the suspension rate has decreased significantly due to certain laws and so forth?
Sorry. As suspension rates have decreased significantly due to certain laws, I would just like to see there be in place with this new budgeting program that there's a program for our staff, administrators, and teachers to develop relationships with our students who are being held with in-house suspension and how to develop relationships, because I think that's where we're seeing a lot of the fallout. And we need professional development to help our administration and our teaching staff and support staff develop relationships overall with kids to nurture their experience while they're being consequenced in school. But that's it.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. We'll discuss it in Subcommittee as well. All in favor, say aye, or say no, as have it. The motion is carried. Need a motion to accept reports of the Superintendent 8.1 and 8.3 as reports of progress by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Mon. All in favor, motion is approved. We now go to nine, new business. 9.1 is the budget transfer. Need a motion to approve the budget transfer of $114,068 by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi? Seven yeas approved.
Okay. This section, 9.2 is the one that we move up, 8.2 to discuss with. So 9.2 and 8.2. 8.2 is the fiscal year '23 budget update. 9.2 is the approval of fair student funding pool for fiscal year '23. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to try to take my best cue from our current mayor and try to be as efficient as possible. What I would ask the committee is, if you ever need us to slow down or speed up, please let us know. I know as we get into the budget process, things can be perhaps more complex than we think they are when we try to communicate them. But I'm going to start you off with just an overview of the FY23 budget overall, and then Ms. Turner will take you through the immediate decision for tonight, which is authorizing our school site councils to begin their work, which is a significant undertaking for our budgeting process here in Lowell Public Schools. Our goal is to get our school-based budget worksheets to our principals by Monday. So in order to get them to our principals by Monday, we'll need the committee's authorization tonight, hence the action item in front of you. In order to authorize that step, we thought it's important for you to see the overall budget picture as we're going to be communicating with the broader community. There's a lot of work that needs to happen here, yet in terms of community engagement. But you can see here with the packet and what's provided for you, the various ways that we're looking to invest based on the feedback we've currently received. So first, I just, very briefly, just want to take you to the slide where you'll see a Venn diagram. It says the total budget landscape. The importance here is the committee last year, I think wisely, asked us to view one plan with one financial plan, one educational plan with one financial plan, not looking at an ESSER plan and a Student Opportunity Act plan, but rather our strategic plan. And then code within your budget, which fund was used to pay for what expenditure. We're looking to move in that same direction this year unless there's different guidance from the committee, where we will provide for you one strategic plan, which currently the committee has, one set of actions, one budget with separate funding streams. And that's what you see reflected here in the budget landscape. You may see other communities going after this with multiple plans. I think that was wise on behalf of the school committee last year, and we would recommend that we continue in that direction this year. So then the question becomes, how do you prioritize those dollars? Because we can do anything, but we can't do everything. Our strategic plan guides those investments. And our data helps us to prioritize within that plan certain actions. These are the actions that we believe are going to be necessary for targeted investments to support our students through accelerated learning as we move into FY23. So you're going to see us move forward with a plan that captures or supports what we call the instructional core. That's the interaction between the teacher and the student around the content through five key investment areas. Extending learning time across the district, supporting teachers to improve classroom practice, supporting students with strategic school-based interventions. That's the particular investment area that we're going to be talking about thoroughly tonight to get our schools moving with their school-based budgets. Meeting the non-instructional needs of students in school communities and supporting... Meeting the non-instructional needs of students in school communities and supporting the homeschool partnership. Within your packet, you'll see investment areas broadly outlined as we're going to be discussing with the community to get continued community feedback. All of these, the Committees heard about over the course of certainly last year coming into this year, additional learning time equivalent to two full school days. You'll remember that from our collaboration with the United Teachers of Lowell about how we're looking at professional learning time and how we're looking at our early release days to ensure that we're investing in professional learning and also ensuring that we can increase academic time for our students. The expanded after-school and summer program, that's familiar to the Committee. I'm going to, I'm going to speed through that if there's no other questions. Here is supporting students with strategic school-based interventions. This is the topic for tonight's discussion that Ms. Turner will walk you through. These are our school-based budget worksheets. This is how it looks. They're larger view. This is not intended for you to see the specifics here. It's just a placeholder as a visual for the community. We are recommending an increase here in school-based budgets that'll empower our parents, our teachers, and our principals to plan at the school level. In addition to increasing the Fair Student Funding Pool, which Ms. Turner will, again, walk you through this evening, we're also recommending that we maintain the mid-year adjustments that we just provided this past year based on the data as it was moving through this current school year. If you recall, the social workers and the positive behavior resource teachers, full-time building-based substitutes, and also the additional support for Renaissance schools, we're going to be recommending that we maintain those as supplemental positions within the school-based budget worksheets. They don't move through the Fair Student Funding Formula, but we expect that these are going to be needs as well for our schools. Our schools did ask for and have requested flexibility within these areas, but just similar to how the Committee provided flexibility based on the staffing shortages with the adjustment counselors versus social workers, these will be supplements where they'll have limited flexibility, meaning they're mental health supplements. So within the arena of mental health, the schools can have some flexibility, adjustment counselor versus social worker and so on. There's going to be a need for behavioral support. We still think that's going to be necessary. So whether it's a positive behavior resource teacher or another behavioral support, our, the supplement will be around behavioral support. And the same for building-based substitutes. There's going to be a need for coverage of classrooms. So, building-based substitutes will be a classroom coverage supplement. It will be equivalent to what the Committee provided out this past year. And if a school site council chooses to replicate those investments this year, they'll have the funds to do that. And if they choose some flexibility within those areas, then we'll certainly authorize, and I would recommend to the Committee that we authorize that limited flexibility in those areas. So these two are going to be what's before the Committee tonight. It's not locking you into any budget decision tonight, as Ms. Turner will share. That happens in May. But this is authorizing and empowering with the endorsement of the Committee, the school site council work that'll convene. So as they're engaging in that work, they know they are authorized by the Committee to do so. There is, then we're going to, supporting teachers to improve classroom practice. We talked, there's going to be some significant investment around recruitment and retention. You heard some of our earlier presentation around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. That's where you'll start to see those investments. Non-instructional needs of students, transportation and the Student Resource Center that we've talked about, and the full-service community school model. You're going to be hearing more and more about these investments. These won't be new to the Committee. It's within your packet. It's only, it's there to show that this is going to be a holistic budget, a comprehensive budget, where tonight's decision is one part of that. While it's a major part of it, we didn't want the community to assume that that was the only investment that the Committee is making. The budget recommendation. Here, Ms. Doherty, you were just asking this question about the enrollment and placement services. We do expect that to come back to you as well for improvements, and we're acknowledging that and affirming that, along with the Parent Leadership Institute, which we expect to bring back to you an update on that at the next meeting. Lot of next steps. The biggest one, the biggest takeaway here is a lot of community engagement yet in front of us. And again, for purposes of the community to emphasize, tonight's decision is, and recommendation is around authorizing the school site council work. And I know we have a lot of school site council members and principals that are watching. That's the intent of tonight. And with that, I'm going to hand the remote over to Ms. Turner to move right into what was previously the new business item, which is the authorization of the Fair Student Funding Pool. Ms. Turner?
So, the agenda of my report tonight includes determining the recommended school-based budget amount, which does include two parts. The Fair Student Funding Pool that is controlled directly by the schools and supplements. What, it also will share what happens next in Fair Student Funding. It will share how schools develop their fiscal plans with school site councils, a recap of where the money comes from and where it goes, and then Fair Student Funding summaries in addition to the action needed. I will say that I have slides that have extensive information on it, but that's just to show the tools that were used so that the new school committee members are aware of the Fair Student Funding process. If you would like me to go into more detail, I welcome you to contact me, and we can get together, and I can share that with you. So the first slide is to show you how we have overlapping steps. In January, we start the budget process by updating the collective bargaining agreement, the raises, the health insurance, and other contractual increases. We wait for the governor's numbers in January. We review grants and revolving account balances to determine a tentative overall budget amount that we can start the process with. In February, we update with, the budget document with programmatic changes, and we determine a proposed school-based budget amount, including the Fair Student Funding Pool and supplements. Two budget summits are also held during this month so that we can train the school site councils on budgeting. In March, after the school committee approves the SBB pool amount for schools on March second, hopefully, we distribute the SBB amount to schools using weeks, baselines, and transition policies. On March seventh, if you approve tonight, we take the next couple of days and prepare all of the funding documents, which shows a funding summary per school and a workbook so that they can start translating their QIP, which is their Quality Improvement Plan, into a fiscal plan. So on March seventh, those booklets would be released. The schools would then start to work with the school site councils from March seventh to March twenty-second to translate the QIP into the fiscal plan. And just as a point of, a point to make, they are working on their budget in January and February by identifying what the school's priorities are. They just do the translation piece over the next few weeks. March twenty-second through April first is when they start to present, the principal presents to a central office team their budget. And this ensures that they're meeting regulatory requirements, curriculum requirements, fiscal requirements. So that process begins March twenty-second. In April, after each school's budget has been approved, all budgets are merged into an overall budget document to ensure that it balances. During April, forums are going to be held to share the draft overall comprehensive plan, the budget, with the parents, teachers, communities, and partners so that we vet it before we bring it forth to you on May fourth. On May fourth, the entire budget document will be shared with you. Public hearings are also held in May. On May eighteenth, that's the anticipated day of approval. After it's approved, then we share it with the city council for their approval. This slide is just saying how, first step here is to determine the school-based budget amount. It has a little picture to show that of the total revenue, we have to divide it between school-based budgets that include your Fair Student Funding Pool and the supplements. But above that, we have district-wide operations that include transportation, family resource center, pupil services, health facilities, all still student-related or necessary to proceed with the district. This is a sheet that the Superintendent already shared. It shows you all the different funding buckets. As you can see, we show the chapter seventy, the city cash, an estimated revolving account contribution, and total grants. The important part to note here is that if you looked at a sheet that showed total grants, you may see a forty million dollar ESER, but I didn't, and yet, there's only forty million dollars total here. Above it, you'll see that ESER was divided into three years, so you would look at the year two plus other grants. So again, this is just showing you the different funding summaries. This next slide is just showing you how the state determines their state aid to us. Again, I'm not going to get into this. There's just some points of, to note, such as the low-income student population increased by eight hundred and sixty students. Because they're giving us eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars more per student, that equates to fourteen point seven million dollars more for low income alone. There's many points like that to make. I won't go into detail here. I just wanted you to know, this is how the state revenue is determined. The next slide, again, I'm not going into this, but you can see there's a lot of color coding. If you did like to get into the details, there is a legend at the bottom that explains certain things. The purple section, we deleted that, or certain sections, like the red section, the school committee decided that we should not proceed with those endeavors and instead give it to the Renaissance schools. So this is just showing you how we are doing the entire ESER amount of fifty-eight million dollars. We divide it by endeavor and by year and by grant. The next slide is just to show you that we do a thorough review each year when we're coming up with your school-based budget amount. We review all of your grants, and the, I did include a column to show how much we've collected so far for your review. I also have a revolving account balance sheet there. Again, it's very difficult to read because it's not meant to study that at this time. It's just to show you that these are the things we consider when we come up with the SBB pool. This slide, I put this in more for the new people so that they can understand what happens, how we have one comprehensive report when we provide you the report on May fourth. This comprehensive report with all known buckets of money. In the past, when I first started, we would have some grant cost included in the budget, but not all, or we, so we may not have included ESER. What we're trying to do here is, we're showing you the budget divided by the Department of Ed function codes such as administration, instruction, pupil services, facilities, employee benefits, capital, and programs with other districts. Those are the main categories of expenses. So you'll see your budget document divided like that. You'll also see current year, you'll see the general fund, grants and offsets, and then ESER two and three, because those are three major points of distinction. And then you'll see it for the following year, what's proposed. The last thing to note on this sheet, which is only an excerpt of the budget you would get, of course, the last thing is, the last two columns will show the entire budget line by line, and what we put into the central locked pool and what went into the school-based budget pool, so that you'll start to understand how we come up with the amount. The next slide is just showing you what's next, what's going to happen next in Fair Student Funding. After the school-based budget pool amount is approved, the next step is to spread the money to schools. The way we spread the money, or before we even spread the money, just to give you a recap, we use Fair Student Funding to make sure that we have an equitable allocation, that the money follows the students. Two page, two or three slides ago, I showed you how the state determined the aid. If you looked at that, you would see that the money is coming in based upon poverty, ELL students, special ed students. So the money should then follow those students as well. This system also offers transparency, and you'll see an example of what the schools get later on so that you'll understand why we think we're transparent. And it also offers stability, where we don't want large swings for each of the schools. Again, we're balancing equity and stability. We do a base weight for every student of fifty-four hundred dollars. Then the student need weights, they vary, and I'll go into that in a different slide. Baseline services, that's where we determine how much we need as a bare minimum for general ed, special ed, and ELL. And then the transition policies are just those rules that we implement to make sure a school doesn't see a large swing. Here's the page that I'm sharing every year so that you understand how we're distributing the money. We give extra weight for low-income students, homelessness, performance needs, English-language learners, students with disabilities, and priority grades. And then if you like the details, you'll see how much per ba, you know, what percentage each of those offer. The next slide is just one that defines what we consider a baseline service. One principal, one assistant principal. If we put a baseline amount in the algorithm and the schools' weights don't give them enough to provide these services, then a baseline supplement is added. So this is ensuring that they have enough to provide at least this. The next slide is showing different baseline policies for both special ed and ELL. The next slide is the important one. If we, we just said that we, with Fair Student Funding, we're going to offer equity through weights. On the funding source page that each school gets, which is this sheet in front of you, they'll see their weights and how many students they had in each category and how that came up with their total amount. Below that, they'll see their baseline. So they'll see amounts that they, if they, a small school like the Moody or the Washington, if they didn't have enough students to feed that weight, then they would get a supplement, and it would show there. And then transition policies show if you were going to lose money because you had enrollment changes, we would put a transition policy in, like we are this year, saying no one should lose any money at all. And so that would be listed there so that the school committee and the principal and school site councils are aware that the school would have lost money, but we're not allowing it. Below that is a funding from outside Fair Student Funding. That is where we would list things like the supplements that we're suggesting, like Renaissance supplements that the school committee directed us to provide last year. On the right-hand side, that's where you see the transparency items. You'll see a year-to-year comparison. The next thing that we wanted to share tonight is how schools develop their quality improvement plans and a fiscal plan with their school site councils. Then, the slide that's right here is a guardrail slide. I'm not going to read this. It's just showing you examples of, even when we give the schools money, there is accountability. They have to follow guardrails because we may have the expertise on, you must have a principal. We don't want someone to, you know, the school site council to make a decision that we may not agree with. So there are guardrails for them to consider. The next slide is just simply saying what I've been trying to say about accountability and transparency. Despite the empowerment that we want schools to have, we do know that there's a high level of accountability that's needed. So after the school site council process, which means they're all having their opportunities for input then, we'll still, they'll present to each other, then they present to central office. Then we will hold teacher forums, parent forums, community forums, student forums, finance Subcommittee meetings each month, and school committee presentations and public budget hearings. Again, after it's all said and done, it merges back into this main budget document that you're accustomed to getting. If I do a recap of where the money comes from and where it goes, you'll see that the governor, the governor's budget is released in January. Then you have, we determine an SBB amount, which we're trying to do tonight. Then the schools build their budgets and vet. Then we roll that into a main budget. It's presented to the school committee and approved. We continue to monitor all the grant allocations that are not released until after you approve the budget. And then we make continuous updates and transfers because we get the data after you've already approved stuff. These slides, I'm not going to go into all the details on here either. It's just trying to show you, if you wanted the details, you'll see that what percentage of each type of funding source, we have like seventy-seven percent is coming from the state. And we also wanted you to see that every dollar we get, whether it's the state aid, city aid, grants, or whatever it is, every dollar is budgeted. We know, we don't have buckets, so by the end of the budget process, everything will be included in this budget that we know.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, for, I'm going to interrupt. At that segue, does the Committee members would like her, Ms. Turner, to continue to finish the rest of the slides? Or do you want to do questions and comments on the presentation? Because I know that this package was already provided to you beforehand. Do you want to just start asking questions or comments? Is that, would that be okay?
There's a lot left, right?
I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, it's not much left? Okay. You want Ms. Turner to finish the presentation? Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Turner, please finish the presentation.
Okay. So the next slide is just showing you that of the school, if you take the budget as a whole, sixty-seven percent is school-based, thirty-three percent is considered other. Of the other, if you look down there, you'll see that it includes tuition, pupil services, district, fringe, all of those things. And below that, you'll see what each of those include, like pupil services includes transportation, family resource center attendance, so that you see that the entire, even, we can't give the entire budget to the schools because we have to cover all these other costs. The next slide is just showing you of the amount that we're asking you to approve for the school-based budgets tonight. It includes ninety percent directly to the schools for their own autonomy, the Fair Student Funding Pool. Ten percent is for supplements, and the supplements would be one for Renaissance schools, one for a building sub-supplement, one for mental health, and one for behavioral support supplements. The Superintendent mentioned that we want to continue what you've already approved this year, like the additional social workers, but some schools have indicated that that this year, like the additional social workers, but some schools have indicated that that may not work best for them. They would still do a mental health support staff, but maybe not that particular position if they already have it. So, we're doing it as a supplement with some flexibility. And why not more? Just as a reminder, that we have all the things, uncontrollable cost increases like health insurance, step raises and all of that. And I already shared with you about the Fair Student Funding, what it includes, the wakes, the baselines, and the transitions. These next three slides here are just very informational slides that show you how we've increased by $10 million, let's say, in the Fair Student Funding Pool, and most of it is going to the need-based wakes. So, most of it is going through to equity. We will keep these updated and bring them to you as we get more information from the schools and divide everything. The last slide, I wanted you to know is that every, we can do anything, but we can't do everything, so we're getting all the opportunity, we're giving all these opportunities for input and feedback from people, but having the input does not mean everyone will get what they want, because if one school, if there's one person that wants an additional custodian, but the rest of the school site council want an additional reading teacher, then one person might not get what they want, and they could possibly call you. Doesn't mean we didn't hear them, it's just that they, majority rules. And the other part that I wanted to point out is that approving this amount tonight just allows us to move forward and give the schools an amount to start with. You will still approve the overall budget in May. If we decide it, we could always increase. We did not want to give too much, you know, so we were conservative, but we wanted you to know too, that after you, if you approve tonight, that allows us to move on to building the budgets, and then merging them into a final budget document for you to review and approve. So, tonight, we're asking the school committee to vote on the Fair Student Funding Pool amount and supplements. The pool amount would be $158,466,552, and the supplement amount, that includes those Renaissance, mental health, building subs, and behavior supports, is $17,820,000. And that's all.
Thank you. And I think, again, it's important to emphasize, this is an extraordinary opportunity with this year's budget. There's also extraordinary needs that have to be met, but I think going forward, there's a lot of optimism in our community, that together as a community, we can plan forward and meet the needs of our kids, and we're confident that our students here in Lowell will be better off from having faced this crisis here in Lowell than if they had been anywhere else. With that, our recommendation is approval as written. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Turner's available for questions, as is the rest of the staff.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Just a few, I think, quick questions. So, basically, we're looking at a $10 million increase in the Fair Student Funding across the district. That's, okay, I just want to make sure I'm taking that the right way. And then the 17.8 is basically the stabilization funds for those smaller schools and the things that keep everyone kind of at parity right now, and then they can take on the additional Fair Student Funding to allocate. Am I understanding that right?
The $10 million includes the stability, the baseline, and the wakes, so the $10 million includes that.
The $10 million increase includes the 17.8?
No, the $10 million includes Fair Student, all the Fair Student Funding amounts, the baseline, the wakes, and the transition policies. The 17.8 million of those Renaissance initiative, I mean, the initiatives that are Renaissance, mental health, those, we're still controlling those. We didn't put it in there, because we wanted them to say, you must have a mental health, you know, staff person, and then we can't, we can't feed the Renaissance through the wakes, because then it would go to all the schools. If we wanted it as a supplement, now only certain Renaissance schools would get it. So, it's part of the SBB pool amount, but not part of the Fair Student Funding.
Okay. So, it's just pre-allocated, really, to those? Okay, that's fine. One thing I did note, and I'm not sure which part of the report it was, but the, discussing the pre-K transportation, is that a recommendation that we're going to be considering at some point, or?
Yeah, it's, so it is something that's currently within our plan. That's one that is going to be, continue to be vetted with the community. There are two parts of that, so that's not going to go within the pool. It is, and you know the many complexities of transportation of this past year, which is also why we had to vet it, but we have heard from the community that there's a need for transportation at both the pre-K and high school level that have not been provided before. Right now, we have greater confidence that we'll be able to provide you a recommendation around high school transportation, because that's working in collaboration with LRTA. The school bus drivers is our challenge, not the need, and not the desire within the community, so that was within the prior packet. The committee should expect that as of right now, that's going to be discussed within our community stakeholder meetings. It wouldn't be a, an obligation of schools to purchase it. It would be an expectation, and I'll bring it back to you as part of my recommendation, but again, it's still going to be continued vetting. Of course, those are high-level investments, and we want to be able to commit to them. However, there's other complexities with transportation overall, given this environment.
Yeah. Okay. We can look forward to that. And then my, my final comment just was, you know, I think as we went through this process, this will now be our third time, our third go-round, I think for myself, particularly during last season, last budget season, I found it really interesting and compelling and validating, that we had an opportunity to have representatives from the school-based communities discussing their process, discussing what they went through. I'd like to see that, and I defer to the chair of the finance subcommittee, but to have that opportunity again, and in any ways that we can strengthen, I mean, I think, you know, again, you will be in a situation where everyone doesn't get everything they want, that, that's life. But I do think being able to amplify parent voices in this process is what makes it, is what offers me the most kind of excitement about being, about seeing this implemented. So, I mean, just as we go through the training with our school site councils and, and all that, I think ensuring that we really have parent voices being represented, you know, certainly also teacher voices and other members of the school committee, but, school community, rather, but I do think that that was something that made this real, and there's a lot of graphs and a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of information, but what was compelling in the end was hearing those voices of people who had gone through this process, felt they had been heard, when traditionally, they hadn't been, parents and, and other members of the school community hadn't been part of this process. So, I think that that's, you know, just a recommendation I would make, as we're kind of tracking out the calendar of how we're going to share this information over time. Thank you.
Any other comments or comments? Hearing none, need a motion to increase the school, to increase the recommended school-based budget by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
9.3, need a motion to post the school garden coordinators by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
9.4, need a motion to increase the paraprofessional substitute pay by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
9.5, need a motion to approve the doctoral research proposal for Maggie Moriarty by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Mon. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
We're going to a 10 convention and conference request. There's one item that just came to our attention. I need a motion to suspend the rules to add an additional conference request by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
Okay, so two motions. Need a motion to approve both conference requests together by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
All right, we're at the Section 11, professional personnel. 11.1, the LSAA donated sick days. Katie McGann bought a school social worker, the motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Mon. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
11.2, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 33 sick leave days to Patricia Williams, Lowell High School teacher, need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi. Seven yeas approved.
12, the motion adjourned by Ms. Mon.
Mr. Mayor?
You go first, then I have one too.
Sorry.
Very good. Mr. Lay?
Do we need to approve this, the request that we did already?
I think that was the field we did, thank you. I thought you were going to take up another 20 minutes, Mr. Lay. 12 adjournment, also, Ms. Mon.
And I swear to God, I'm not going to be long, so don't worry about 20 minutes. Just as a point of personal privilege, I did just want to send out thanks and appreciation to the team of educators who put together the middle school, high school science fair that happened last night at Lowell High School. It was a very impressive event, and honestly, the first one I've been able to go to as a school committee member in two years, to be able to actually go to a school-based event, see the students, see them having an opportunity to kind of show off what they've learned and what they've, what they've created in their, their science projects. It really was very, very well done, impressive, both in terms of the, the work that staff had done to put this all together, but honestly, in terms of the kids who were so excited. And, and it really was, it was an impressive day, and for the, the student whose pea plants got frozen because we had that swing of weather, that's unfortunate. For the other students who, who almost set his house on fire with a battery that he was using for electromagnetism, there was some, there was some real drama that these kids went through in putting together their projects, and it was very impressive and a, and a great showing. So, thanks again to all the staff, and again, most importantly, to the students for sharing their experiences with myself and many other judges. Thank you.
Sounds like a good event. Thank you for sharing that with us. Any other personal privilege?
I just want to wish the superintendent a happy birthday. That's all.
Happy birthday. Ms. Desmond?
Are we going to sing?
Just to expand upon the, the events that are coming up, the educational events that are coming up, we do have our Knowledge Bowl in person starting next week, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, announcements? Need a motion to adjourn by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Thompson on 50 I, so you know that